This is the municipal court judge and Spokane school board. Frances. The Spokane Coalition of Color consists of Asian Pacific Islander Coalition, APIC, Spokane National Association for the Advancement of Color People, the NAACP, the Hispanic Professional Association, the Muslim Community Action and Support, MCIS. Our collective mission statement is, "The Spokane Coalition of Color builds stronger, healthier, more equitable communities by valuing all ethnicities through the spirit of friendship."
Sorry Karen, the land acknowledgement?
Yeah.
Before we begin, every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land since in warmer. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. So we begin this morning acknowledging we are on ancestral lands of the Spokane tribe of Indians and a multitude of tribes connected through shared history of trade, celebration, and resources. We make this acknowledgement to pay their respects elders past, present, whose knowledge remains on the land. Please take a moment to consider many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, settlement that bring us together here today, and please join us in continuing to learn about such truths and actions that we take towards restorative justice. Before we get any further, Frances, will you do a quick tutorial on Zoom for our audience, please?
Yes, thank you Karen. So my name is Frances Mirdal, APIC Spokane, and I'll be managing the behind the scenes of the candidate forum with the other SEOC members Stacy Wells and Ruina Pineta. So quick Zoom 101 as a virtual attendee in this candidate forum. At the bottom of your screen, you will see three buttons, the chat, Q&amp;A, and live transcript. Currently, the chat button has been disabled for all attendees. If you have any webinar and technology concerns or questions for the candidates, please use the Q&amp;A button. For accessibility, please click on the live transcript button where you will find options to view the full transcript or enable live actions. That's it for now, thank you Karen.
We welcome Ms. Gloria Achoa-Brock and Judge Matthew Antush. Candidates will be answering questions posed by me. We want to honor your and the candidates' time by finishing on time. We will make every effort to get to the questions. From the audience, we hope that once we are finished, you will feel that you have a better understanding of where each candidate stands in relation to issues that are important to people of color in our community and the community in general. Each candidate has two minutes to introduce themselves, show the office they're running for, and make their opening statements. Following the opening statements, each candidate will be asked the same four questions, and each one will have one minute to answer each question. I may ask follow-up questions. We will take the question from the audience. Audience should pose their questions on Q&amp;A, which can be found at the bottom of your screen. Audience members can choose to direct their questions to specific candidate. After the last question, each candidate will have two minutes for closing statement. Nicole Rosenkranz is our timekeeper. She will raise a card for 30 seconds, warning the whistle to stop when your time is up. We encourage civic engagement and then dialogue between people of different points of view. Please be respectful of each other. Audience members who exhibit unruly behavior will be removed. Before we pose our questions to the candidates, we want to start by reviewing the role of the municipal court candidates should have joined Zoom. The Spokane Municipal Court has authority to process criminal misdemeanors and civil infractions. Criminal charges are either misdemeanors or gross misdemeanors, both of which are punishable by imprisonment and/or a fine. Criminal misdemeanor cases carry a maximum penalty of 90 days in jail and a $1,000 fine. Examples of misdemeanors are disorderly conduct, no valid operator's license. Criminal gross misdemeanors carry a case maximum penalty of 364 days in jail and a $5,000 fine. Examples of gross misdemeanors are theft of property or services valued up to $750, driving while under the influence, DUI of alcohol or drugs, and domestic violence. Civil infractions are violations of the law that have a fine or penalty amount but are not punishable by imprisonment. Examples of infractions are speeding, no liability insurance, expired vehicle license, defective equipment, or parking violations. We also want voters to be aware that the role of judge differs from the role of other elected officials, such as the members of the Spokane City Council Board or School Board. They are limited in discussing certain subjects. We want to introduce the candidates for municipal court judge position three. Each Ms. Gloria Achoa-Brock and Judge Matthew Antush. Each candidate has two minutes to introduce themselves and provide an opening statement. For the opening statement, we would like the candidates to address the questions. Let's start with Ms. Achoa-Brock. And then go to Judge Antush. How have you promoted equity and inclusion and cultural humility in your life? Ms. Achoa-Brock?
So I am the daughter of a 16-year-old survivor of sexual assault that decided to keep me. I was born in Mexico. My parents, my dad, my mom met my dad when I was a baby and we moved to the United States. We were undocumented immigrants. My parents got deported when I was five years old while they were at, while we were at childcare and they were at work. That created years of trauma and a great sense of responsibility placed upon me as the oldest of six siblings, that if that happened again, I was responsible for making sure our family stayed together. English is my second language. I come from a low-income socioeconomic start in my life with my parents being farmworkers. I worked all through school to get my education, so I understand the struggle of being not only a person of color but also living in the shadows until 1986 when my parents adjusted their status. I bring all of that lived experience. Also, in addition to that, I also had a lot of blessings. I've had two parents that have been married for 47 years now, and we always had a home, we always had food, even if it was with the food bank, but I never experienced homelessness from my parents being impacted by criminal justice system. So I bring those things knowing that other people have had other experiences than my own. That has given me great humility. And in addition to that, I think I have another great experience that I've had in my life that has really impacted my work has been being appointed by tribal council in 2012 with the Spokane Tribe of Indians. And I had no, although I had an education going through college and a law degree, I had never been exposed to historical trauma, federal Indian policy, areas of injustices that have occurred in our country that I was unaware of, and that really opened up a whole new world of new knowledge that I've invested the last, from 2012 to now, on my education. And so I would bring that perspective, knowing that I don't know everything, and there's a lot to learn, and those closest to the problem are closest to the solution.
Mr. Antush?
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Judge Matt Antush, and I'm running to retain my seat in the Spokane Municipal Court, position three. Thank you for being here on a Saturday and sharing your time with me. I've spent the past 30 years working with individuals from Spokane, experiencing barriers in one form or another, access to housing, employment, quality education, and of course the justice system. Both my work and experiences have shown me that some of the contributing factors of these barriers, things like addiction, mental illness, incarceration, and of course disparate race, gender, and equity, or excuse me, sexual orientation treatment are more than one person or even a judge can fix alone. I could spend hours explaining why my personal and professional experience drew me to procedural justice and my work in therapeutic courts, like the community court, drug court, mental health court, and now as presiding judge in the DUI court. There are my attempts to recognize the privilege I have, listen to those with a different life experience than mine, and work within the system to address those barriers, to create a better system for everyone, whether in meetings with the homeless coalition, the Supreme Court Interpreter Commission, Race Equity Committee, or visiting my clients in their camps and shelters, treatment facilities or hospitals, sometimes sadly attending their memorial services. I've always tried to interact with people on a personal as well as professional level, trying to show them that I care, not because they're a client, but because they're human. I feel passionately about the therapeutic and supportive concepts that we employ now in our probation department and the transition away from the previous enforcement model. That is something that we've been working on for several years and is more than just a few concept or name changes. The amount of behind-the-scenes work involved in our project, this is incredible. It's also incredibly important towards steps, towards equity and inclusion. For the past 30 years, I've helped people navigate our criminal justice system. I've spent the past three years to use my position to change the system from within and be more responsive to the needs of the community. Thank you.
Okay, next question. Happened to my screen here. So question number two, and we're gonna go with Ms. Achoa-Brock. What do you believe are the causes of high rates of incarceration among Black and Brown people?
Okay, just want to clarify, the question on the screen's different. So do I answer the one you asked me or the one that's being displayed?
I think Karen, we're still in question number one. That was an opening statement a while ago.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. What do you perceive as the greatest obstacles to justice, if any?
Well, I think one of the biggest obstacles to justice, specifically in communities of color, has been this long-held notion that the criminal justice system exists on its own and is disconnected from any other system. And it's critically important for those connections to be made. There's connections to public health, there's connections to education, there's connections to housing, employment, all the barriers that have been built for people to successfully not only avoid, have diversion options, but avoid all of the barriers that happen after someone gets convicted of a crime. And so I think that there's a lot of work to be done. There isn't one solution that's gonna fix it all. It's gonna take a lot of intentional work and a lot of collaborative partnerships that include community, because again, as I said earlier, those closest to the problem are closest to the solution.
Thank you. What, for, what is your general judicial philosophy?
All right, Karen, can you ask Mr. Antush the same question, please? What do you perceive as the greatest obstacle to justice, if any?
This is for Mr. Antush. What do you perceive as the greatest obstacle to justice, if any?
Um. So, when I think about justice, I'm thinking about the way that the system, judicial system or justice system processes cases through a court system, right? So there are many things which factor into the legislation for which courts cannot get involved. A judge cannot lobby and change legislation. A judge cannot get involved with the decision to enforce particular statutes or not, can't get involved with whether or not to prosecute a case. And the reason courts or judges cannot get involved in that, because the first thing we must do is we must be impartial, and to get involved in legislation or enforcement issues is a problem, is, brings into question our impartiality and confidence in the decisions that we make. So that's why what we've tried to do is, once cases are filed, and we're actually working on a pre-filing option in light of Blake, oh, there you go. Follow the law, apply the Constitution, those are the things the courts need to do. Sorry.
Okay, question two. Ms. Achoa-Brock, we're gonna start with you. What do you believe are? What do you believe are the causes of high rates of incarceration among Black and Brown people?
So I have 40 years of experience having served as a deputy prosecuting attorney, working with victims of crime. I've also been a public defender and practiced state and federal courts. And I was doing all this criminal justice reform policy work for the city when I was there for six years, and one thing that I noticed is that I had a knowledge gap, and so I returned back to school to earn a master's in criminal justice and criminology so that I could really get to the depth of these issues. And going back to what I alluded earlier, it's that the causes of incarceration really are, going back to being systemic. It all begins with, going back to the disparities that exist in all of our systems that impact people of color and how those then perpetuate higher rates of incarceration among African-American, Black, Indigenous people. And so it's important to acknowledge that, that these are systemic, systemic issues that cause the higher rates of incarceration. It has nothing to do with integrity, or character, or morality, or any of the things that are often pointed to.
Mr. Antush?
So what contributes to the higher rates of incarceration for, or higher rates of incarceration for Black and Brown people? It is systemic. It is the decisions of what statutes, what cases, or excuse me, what statutes, what laws we're gonna pass. It's a value system of the people that are electing the folks who are passing these laws. And then there's the decisions on who is gonna get, what's gonna get enforced. The real problem too, I think, is the use of sort of a rote or use of things like criminal history in determining pre-trial release or pre-trial release condition. That's why we worked so hard to create this pre-trial navigation program that we'll be launching here in a few weeks, to have people access services which are bringing them to the system, or bringing them in the criminal justice system to begin with. And I can expand more on that later, if I have time.
Thank you. So our next question, Ms. Achoa-Brock, please describe. Please describe your firsthand experiences if dealing with any, if any dealing with people who are different from you socially, economically, or politically.
Okay, so do I answer the question you asked me or the one that's on the screen? I just wanna make sure I'm on point.
I'm so sorry. I, please describe a situation in which you took a controversial position that angered or offended people and explain how you handled it.
Oh, that's all right. I've never been asked this question. Well, I think whenever you're doing any sort of systems change work, you're going to offend, you're, anytime you try to disrupt the system, I think the system is very happy with the way it is. People say the criminal justice system is broken, but it's really not. It's doing exactly what it was designed to do, which is to incarcerate poor people and people of color. So anytime there is any effort to try to change an outcome, the system will push back because it's very comfortable doing what it does. When I was working with the city, I think the, one example was, I pushed, I advocated really hard for there to be representation from the community on the Spokane Regional Law and Justice Council, and there was a lot of pushback from the county commissioners to the point where one of the county commissioners contacted Mayor Condon and asked him to tell me to back down. Unfortunately, that has been undone, but that was one example where I, you know, I stood up against the lack of desire to include racial equity or include community in something that's very important.
Mr. Antush, the same question?
A controversial position that angered people? And what did I do about it? That's the question.
Yes, it says, "Please describe a situation in which you took a controversial position that angered or offended people and explain how you handled it."
So when I came to the court, one of the things that was of interest to me was to bring some of the things that I learned when I was working in juvenile court and in drug court to what we do in municipal court. I didn't realize that there is actually a rule that says that our probation department has to use a risk needs responsibility tool in monitoring people. And so we are trying to, as folks are on probation or on supervision, so after they've been convicted, we wanted to introduce a risk needs responsibility tool to better address their needs. These wouldn't necessarily be conditions of probation, but just to have them assessed and have them evaluated. I got a lot of pushback from both prosecutors and public defenders about that. They were quite upset that we were somehow meddling with the plea negotiations. It was never the intention, it was really more delivery service to folks. There, I did wanna say one thing, I, I'm familiar with the changes to the SRLJC. There are some committees, the Risk Equity Committee did survive that, the reduction in numbers. So that's, at least some of that work is still gonna be done. I just think that reconstituted this program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Achoa-Brock? Here's an optional question. What is your general judicial philosophy?
So I have served as, I've been appointed by tribal council from Spokane tribe to serve as our chief judge prior to going to the city, and then I've also, currently I'm serving as the associate judge for the council tribe, so I do have judicial experience. And my philosophy has always been that it's critically important to provide people the opportunity to reintegrate successfully back into the community, because if individuals are successful, their families will be successful and our communities will thrive. I also believe that it's critically important as well to ensure that we are aware of victims in our community, DB victims, victims of crime, and that there also, that there be an accountability component to it. So if someone has afforded all of those options and all of those services and they are still not amenable, then there needs to be accountability as well. So I have a balanced approach to my judicial philosophy, and that's what I would bring to the court.
Thank you. Mr. Antush?
Thank you. Well, um. When I started as a lawyer, you know, it was really about get as much experience as I can, and so I didn't think much about what would be my philosophy. What do I, what do I wanna see happen? As time went on, you know, over 30 years working in this, well, 30 years working in this program, this court frankly, I, I follow procedural justice, which is the idea that folks understand what's going on, you explain the system to them, you explain very clearly and in language that folks will understand, you meet them where they're at, let them know that you see them, understand them, and, and that there has to be an account. When, when folks are convicted of a crime, there is accountability, but accountability does not have to be incarceration. And when you do impose a sentence, you explain what it is and why you're doing it. So it's procedural justice would be my judicial philosophy.
Thank you. So we'll go with Ms. Achoa-Brock on this next one. What are your views on whether the court as a whole deals effectively with racial and gender bias?
Oh, I think it's critically important for not just judges, but also prosecutors, defense, anyone working in the system, to be well-versed in understanding how our biases impact the way people are treated. I'm also a huge believer in procedural justice. I think one of the things that in my criminology studies was that in municipal courts specifically or courts of lower jurisdiction, the process is the punishment, because when, when you're dealing with a misdemeanor, it's the level offenses, usually it impacts a lot of people that are in poverty or people that are experiencing challenges, and they have to go to court a lot in order to resolve their cases. So I think it's important, and in that group, it's important for judges to really be versed. And as an example, I am a certified administrator for the IDI, the Intergovernmental Development Inventory, and I've also spent a lot of time educating myself on issues to ensure that I'm aware of my biases and they don't impact the way that I interact with, with people.
Thank you. Mr. Antush?
Could you repeat the question again, please?
Yeah. What are your views on whether the court as a whole deals effectively with racial and gender bias?
So, you know, again, over the course of, you know, a couple decades of watching this as a practitioner, a lawyer in the court, I would say that it did seem to have a disparate impact on folks, things like, one of the things that really used to get to me a lot was that people really weren't in the position, women usually, to bring their children to court, and I know that's not what they want, they wanna teach their kids, you know, they don't wanna necessarily expose them to that. So I don't think it's been in the past terribly productive. We do now have a, we call it differentiated case management. What we do is we have fewer court hearings, give the lawyers an opportunity to expand the cases out. Of course, there has to be a speedy trial waiver, but up to 290 days to resolve a case. So a person only needs to come to court when they want to resolve their case. It's usually up to the lawyers if they come at other times, but the court is not requiring them to be there. We also have remote appearances available for folks. I insisted when I became presiding judge that the entire bench receives race equity training.
Thank you. Now we're gonna have some questions from the audience. I'm gonna start with Mr. Antush. How do you feel about controversial ORAS system that municipal court has implemented recently?
That's the question again, I'm not sure I understand it.
How do you feel about controversial ORAS system that municipal court has implemented recently?
ORAS, the Ohio Risk Assessment Systems. It's, it's, we're working on, so what it is, is a risk needs and responsibility tool. It's an attempt to get, to identify needed services for folks so that they can break their addiction or deal with the mental illness or address dynamic factors like housing and things like that. It is misunderstood to think that probation is setting the terms of probation. We've offered training to both prosecutors and public defenders and state they're compliant, but it's a program that we're working on validating locally.
Thank you. So let me ask you this, Mr. Antush. What would you do to achieve a more equitable solution to change the status quo in Spokane's disproportionately incarcerating and convicting Black and Indigenous and Brown people?
Well. Okay. The. The again, I think there's a lot of determination of what we're going to prosecute, what we're going to make illegal that is not within the province of the court. What, what we can do is deal with access to justice issues as they present themselves to us. That's why we have things like our pretrial navigation or supported release program that we're developing, which will have folks voluntarily access services.
Thank you. Mrs. Achoa Brooke? How do you feel about the controversial ORAS system that the municipal court has implemented recently?
So kind of going back to what I said earlier about, I was working a lot in criminal justice initiatives and I didn't have, I had a knowledge gap, which is why I went back to school so I could learn these things. And one thing that stood out when Judge Antush spoke was about the validation that they're working on getting validated. And I think to me that raises a red flag. I think it would be very important to ensure that before anything is executed, it's going to impact people's lives, that it should be validated first. And so I obviously don't work in that particular court, in municipal court at this time. However, that would be something that I would have a lot of concern about in making sure that I, research was done before it impacted specifically talking about domestic violence issues, victims of crimes and families.
And what would you do to achieve a more equitable solution to change the status quo in Spokane's disproportionately incarcerating and convicting black and indigenous and brown people?
So I do agree with Judge Antush saying that, you know, judges cannot advocate for legislation because we cannot, judges cannot. However, judges can be proactive and not reactive. And I think that's one of the things that's changing across the country with judges and courts getting proactively involved in their community, getting out there and, and making those connections so that we are part of the solution in the capacity that we can. One of the big motivators of me running for office is because I want to be in a position where I have influence and ability to actually affect change. In my, when I worked for the city, I was in a position where I had no budget, no authority and no staff. And so that made it very difficult for me to do work. And I know there's so much possible that can be done in Spokane. There's a lot of wonderful organizations and people that really care about these issues. And to the, the best of my ability and my capacity, I would like to be proactively involved in making change.
Thank you. Judge Antush, do you support a cashless bail system?
Well, I, I have, I have very little faith that the ability of someone to come up with money is going to make the community any safer. That's what bail is. You know, you pay money, you get out of jail. That's, so would I support a cashless bail system? It'll probably annoy all the bail bondsmen out there, but yes, I would support a cashless bail bond system. That's why we're trying to really, right now municipal court really doesn't hold that many people. You got 800. Oh, stop. Sorry.
30 seconds to go. You got 30 more seconds.
Ah, okay. So there's about 800 people in the county jail right now. Less than 10% of them are even held on sin cases. And that is a question whether or not they're held on felonies as well. So we really don't hold that many. But I think with the navigation system that we have, pretrial navigation system we're developing or are going to be rolling out, that will reduce the number even more.
Mrs. Brooke, do you support a cashless bail system?
I was actually very highly involved when the bail project came to Spokane. At that time, I worked, I was on the board of directors for the Empire Health Foundation, working for the city and then also working on a work group that was working on coming up with a bill, a bail system such as the bail project. And I was able to utilize, again, I had no authority, but I had influential, I had positional influence. And I was able to coordinate, having the Empire Health Foundation fund a site visit to Blue Bowl, Kentucky to do a site visit. And then the bail project was interested in working in our community because of all the collaborative partnerships that we had built within the system. I do believe, I'm going to say, I will agree with Judge Antush on this, is that there are alternatives. I think money in itself, I have seen people charged with really high level crimes that have the ability to pay. And all we have to do is come back to court. There is no extra safety in the community. I think what's going to help people is being able to be released pretrial. They're still innocent. They haven't been convicted. But have those important support systems in place to ensure they come back to court and the community is safe.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead with our closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to give their closing state, or yeah, two minutes to make their closing statements. We will start with Judge Antush.
Sorry about that. I didn't realize it was muted. So you may have discovered today that judges are not like other politicians. And it's really not terribly easy to understand our position on issues since we cannot align ourselves with specific parties or causes. Judges cannot tell you how they would rule on a specific case. Yet, we want a judge who is balanced and fair. In both our public and our personal life, we must act to promote confidence in the judicial system. But there are things that you can ask yourself when voting for a judge. Who has the experience to do this job in this court? Who has the knowledge to do it well? And who has the trust of the people they will be working with? I have the endorsement and support of over 30 judges and over 60 local lawyers. People familiar with both candidates and who understand the judicial system and what they need on, what we need on the bench. I have political endorsements from across the political spectrum, from Mayor Woodward to Council President Beggs. I have both business leaders and union endorsements. These aren't my friends. These are people who have seen my work and know I'm dedicated to making the system better for everyone. I'm the only candidate who is willing to submit myself for evaluation. Over 300 lawyers, judges and law professors evaluated me on knowledge, relevant experience, integrity, temperament and suitability, and they rated me well qualified for this position on this court. I thank you for your time and attention today. If there's anything that you would like more information on, please feel free to follow up with me and on any of our social media platforms at Judge Matt Antush. And please don't forget to vote by November 2nd. Thank you.
Ms. Brooke?
I bring not only a diverse perspective, but also a wealth of experience, depth of experience. I have practiced in, again, in federal court. I have tried felony cases in Superior Court. I have worked on complex criminal litigation. I have been appointed by tribal councils for both the Spokane Tribe and the Council Tribe as the tribal court judges. I have also have a wealth of experience working on so many issues in the Spokane community and so many organizations have a proven track record of always doing more than has been asked of me. And if I were to be elected to this position, I would come in and I would do what I've always done, which is work hard, work with community, build collaborative partnerships and use 14 years of litigation experience, having practiced in 14 different jurisdictions in Eastern Washington and finding there's bright spots of things that are being done better in other places and then things that are being done great in Spokane. My perspective is not currently being represented. And I believe the court should be reflective of the communities that they serve. And I would be able to bring a perspective, again, that is needed. And I am highly qualified. I was also rated exceptionally well qualified by the Lauren Miller Bar Association, which is the largest African American bar in the, actually in the country. But it's, I was actually evaluated for Superior Court, which is a higher court. I asked that you vote on November 2nd and that you vote for the candidate that brings the most welcome experience and a perspective that's needed to Spokane Municipal Court. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to thank Mrs. Achoa Brooke and Judge Antush for joining us this morning and all of your time. And thank you for having me. I want to turn it over to Larry.
All right. Thank you, Karen. Yes, thank you, Karen. And and again, thank you to Judge Antush and Mrs. Achoa Brooke for joining us this morning. I now want to welcome the candidates for the Spokane School Board. The candidates are Dr. Melissa Bedford, Mr. Darrell Gefkin, Ms. Kada Dean and Mr. Riley Smith. As a reminder, as we start off this morning, each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statements. This will be followed by four predetermined questions and candidates will have one minute each to respond. And I also reserve the right to ask follow up questions as they come in. So we will also be taking questions from the audiences, one from the audience. And the audience should pose their questions on the Q and A, which can be found at the bottom of your screen. Audience members can choose to direct their question to a specific candidate. After the last question, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. Nicole Rosenkranz is our timekeeper and she will raise a card, giving you a 30 second warning. And then we'll raise a whistle when your time is up. If you don't stop, she will blow the whistle. So before we pose our questions to the candidates, we want to start by reviewing the role of the Spokane School Board. So for the school board, the Board of Directors of Spokane Schools, also known as School Board, has five publicly, publicly elected members. School Board members represent the community in setting policies and directing school programs. School Board members make budget decisions. And the school board members serve in a staggered, the six year, for a staggered six year term. So now we want to start by asking the candidates for school board to introduce themselves and to provide an opening statement. But for the opening statement, we would like the candidates to answer, what is your vision for education in this community? The order of response will be for this question, Dr. Melissa Bedford, followed by Mr. Darrell Gefkin, then Ms. Kada Dean, and finally, Mr. Riley Smith. So Dr. Bedford, you have the floor for your two minute opening statement with the emphasis on answering, what is your vision for education in this community?
Absolutely. Well, hello everyone. I am Dr. Melissa Bedford. My pronouns are she, her, hers. And I'm running for Spokane School Board Director, Position Three. I'm a proud Chinese Filipino American, a former public school teacher and a current teacher of teachers, specifically literacy studies, as you can actually see from the books behind me, all my children's books. And I'm running for school board for my biggest reason, to bring an educator's voice to the table. Because that's a voice that's not currently on our current board. And so I really want to bring my passion and experience in education to the school board. During my time as an elementary school teacher, I taught at low income schools with students from culturally, linguistically and socioeconomically diverse backgrounds. I was honored to not only teach these students, but to be welcomed into their families and communities. I was even a madrina and a quinceañera before, because building those relationships meant so much to me. And I know this is going to sound so cliche, but I wasn't just teaching them, they were teaching me. And so I was also honored to lead and participate in my school's home visit program. And what was great about the program, it was more than just academics. It was about building homeschool partnerships in our communities and helping support our students beyond the school walls. And this is actually something I would love to see integrated into Spokane Public Schools. As I said earlier, I'm running to bring an educator's voice to the table. And I want to bring my experience and passion to education to the school board to support our district as we implement our new equity policy that was just passed, as well as, as we transition into these new school boundaries, which were just redrawn after 40 years. So I really believe that my voice will be a valuable addition to the school board. And I really just want to help create and support an equitable, diverse and inclusive community for our students and our teachers and families. So thank you to the Coalition of Color for having me here today and I look forward to this forum.
Thank you, Dr. Bedford. Now we will hear from Mr. Gefkin and Mr. Gefkin, again, you have two minutes. And if you would address the question of, in your opening, what is your vision for education in this community?
Hi there. Can you hear me? You got it? All right, perfect. Thank you very much. Well, thank you to the Coalition of Color. I really appreciate your, or the opportunity to speak with you today. Albeit virtually not the best opportunity, but still the ability to do that. My name is Darrell Gefkin. I've got a PhD in Leadership Studies and Organizational Theory. I have worked in the Spokane area in partnership with a variety of different communities over the last almost two decades, in partnership with educators and mentors for a significant period of time. Also as an educator myself with GU and Eastern Washington University, as well as an educator for for people across the world, actually, working with people in refugee camps in Africa and the like. Currently work as a financial advisor, have done that for the last seven years. And very proud father of two sons in the SPS District. And one's currently running across country meet, so I'm excited about that. Also a proud husband of a Spokane School District alumnus and my, and my wife. Spokane is a dear community to me. It has grown on me in an incredible way. And my vision for education in Spokane is providing an opportunity and opportunities for all students to become the best version of themselves. That takes a lot of different perspectives. It takes a lot of different history. It takes a lot of involvement in the community, a lot of knowledge of different organizations with which we can partner, a lot of knowledge and understanding of pedagogy, of understanding the message, the way of teaching, of how getting community buy-in is important, making sure that everyone has a voice, making sure that at the end of the day, our students and our families are our primary clients. So from my standpoint, that is what I would work for. It takes a variety of perspectives. It takes, it takes a multiplicity of perspectives and wisdom. It takes community involvement and it takes grounding and foundation in the community to do so. So that's why I'm running. I'm excited about it. I'm very, very passionate about making sure that everyone's voice is heard. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to, excuse me, to talk here.
Thank you very much. And I noticed that you do have a PhD listed behind your name. So from this point forward, if it's acceptable with you, I'll be referring to you as Dr. Gefkin.
Title is, title is inconsequential, just the experience behind it, but I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next candidate to offer the two minute opening statement and addressing the question of what is your vision for education in this community will be Ms. Kada Dean.
All right. I hope you guys can, I'm having some hiccups in my internet for some reason. Sorry, but listen, are you guys okay? You hear it all right?
I think we're hearing you fine. Thank you.
Good. Maybe I resolved it. I'm Kada Dean. I'm excited to be here. Thank you so much Coalition of Color for having us out here for this opportunity and the BIPOC community. It's great to be here. And I just came straight from a soccer game. I had to leave early, but my little girl was playing as a goalie for the first time in about a year and a half. And that was met with a lot of anxiety because the last time she played as goalie, the ball was kicked right in her face. It broke her glasses and cut her cheek. So it's just been such a week of stress leading up to this and I'm just so proud of her. And I am channeling that courage for today because I am just a mother, a mother of five children. You know, I've worked with drug and alcohol addicted teens, victims of sex abuse. And I want to bring my advocacy for children to the board. You know, like advocacy is written on my heart. It's not my political agenda. It is just my life agenda. And I see like students and educators and parents that feel their voices aren't being heard. And I just want to bring that perspective back to, back to the board. You know, wherever I see disparities and, and that sort of thing, I am met right there with passion. You know, I just want to rally these kids and help our families be successful. You know, my vision for schools in our community, it looks like knowledge. You know, even knowledge where we can explore our biases and the racial disparities, of course. It also looks like accessibility to learning for everybody. It looks like transparency from our school board to our families. With this knowledge, there's power in parents. There is, you know, all kinds of champions for change. There's just all kinds of things that we can do and help our families grow. This is just the beginning of a school district that can thrive, you know, as we work towards championing our children. I'm Kada Dean and I'm running for school board.
So thank you very much. Now, our final candidate to give his two minute opening statement and specifically directing his answer or his response to what is your vision for education in this community will be Mr. Riley Smith.
Awesome. Thank you, Larry. And thank you for Coalition of Color for allowing us all the opportunity to speak with you about very important issues in our community. My name's Riley Smith and I'm running for school board to really bring a Spokane schools graduate perspective to the school board. When I looked at our school board, I saw we had When I looked at our school board, I saw we had only one member who had actually attended Spokane Public Schools and graduated from one of our high schools. Now, I don't say that to diminish any of the other perspectives that our school board members bring to the conversation because there are many great voices in the room that I do support. But what I, what I bring from that thirteen years in the classroom, elementary school, middle school, high school, is firsthand experience of how students are being left behind on a day-to-day basis. You know, oftentimes there's a big disconnect between what's happening downtown and what's actually happening in our schools. I'm one who has the experience to tell you that when I was in high school, you had to go to a four-year college to succeed. That was the message that was drilled into my head and all of my peers' heads. Well, we know that's not true. We can increase opportunities to succeed for all of our students. We can invest in apprenticeships and trade school programs to create more opportunities to succeed right here rooted in our community and keep our talented and intelligent community together to give back to Spokane and not leave and get back to another community. I think it also looks like investing in mental health resources for our students. As recently as 2019, forty percent of Spokane's youth said that they were experiencing depression. Now, I don't think it's fair to ask our students to show up to school every day and be able to succeed and grow and then go home and continue that growth when they're dealing with various challenges, whether that be from trauma, anxiety, or other stress triggers. We need to address those mental health challenges and give our students a fair chance to succeed. Now, these are tangible ways that we can bring everybody along with us. Instead of just talking about how are we for equity? Oh, everyone says they're for equity, but how are we going to bring that message through and actually see it through? And these are two ways that I see that we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you to all of you candidates for giving us your two minute opening. And we are now going to ask you to respond to four predetermined questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. And as a reminder, Nicole will be our timekeeper and when she raises that red sheet, that means you have thirty seconds to go. And again, responses are limited to one minute per candidate per question. So the first question, and I'll give you the order that we're going to proceed on this first. The first responder will be Mr. Smith, followed by Ms. Dean, followed by Dr. Giffkin, and again, followed by Dr. Bedford. So our first question. In 2020, Spokane Public Schools passed a racial equity resolution to address some of the inequities within our school system. What do you think this resolution does well? And what do you think we need to put into action immediately? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you, Larry. So I do first and foremost support the equity resolution and its implementation. Of course, I would support something that calls for addressing the opportunity and achievement graph in our schools that calls for greater community and family engagement between our schools and our community. These are great ways that we can bring more students along that have been traditionally left behind by the system. Now, when we think about equity, what does equity mean? And to me, that means bringing the supports to the students where they are so that we can eliminate as many barriers to success that might exist. The way that we can do that is by opening more programs in our schools, not creating all these tailored programs that are scattered throughout the city, but giving more access to those programs such as New Tech, Skill Centers, other ways that students can show their ability to learn and grow and actually provide them with a way to succeed beyond their graduation from Spokane Schools and kind of getting into pushing equity into our community, not just within the walls of our schools.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. Dean, same question. Would you like me to repeat it or do you still, or do you have it?
Great. Sorry, I'm still not hearing everyone clearly. Thank you for updating the text box. Are you getting me clearly now?
Yes.
All right, this is going to be a pain. So as far as the equity policy goes with the equity resolution, you know, I'm grateful for this resolution and the implementation of it will be done through the procedures of our superintendent. And as I met with him about this, I said, you know, what things are going to change? And he said, well, actually, all this stuff is already in our school district. All of this stuff already exists. And, you know, bringing this stuff to light, I think is wonderful and making sure that we are aware and cautious of it. However, I feel like we spent hours and hours poring over this equity policy like line by line. And it seemed like it was very, it took so much of our time while we are trying to get our children back in school. I think these, these programs will be implemented as they already are. And we do need to make sure that we are casting this view over everybody and making sure that everybody has opportunities. Everybody has a chance to succeed and giving our children opportunities to thrive. And if that is just looking back on what we are doing and how we are perceiving them, I think this will be so important.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dean. Now, Dr. Giffkin, the same question.
Absolutely. It's never not a good time to, to affirm the idea that each person has value, never. And so in the equity resolution, that is first and foremost what, what is put forward, is that every person has value and it's our privilege to find out the value in each person. I think when I look at the implementation, I agree with Kada. The implementation is not the job of the board. That being said, we're going to be holding, we're going to be holding the school district accountable to say, are you, are you meaning that? There are a couple of things that I think need to be addressed in a variety of different tactical ways that we could move forward in terms of seeing this implementation really take hold and do exactly what it is in terms of creating education for excellence for everyone. And the first one, I think, is that there's got to be a little bit more of a work on, on some public buy-in. I feel as others, it's become a divisive issue and that needs to change. To be divided on, on helping students succeed is not the way forward. It's not creating a context that we, that we teach people to learn. I think one of the things that we could do with that is we could spend a little bit of time actually clarifying what are the definitions of the words within that policy. You know, that's been brought to light in a couple of different, a couple of different school board meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you much, Dr. Giffkin. Dr. Bedford, the same question.
So I was very excited when this equity resolution was passed, as well as the equity policy that was just recently passed as well unanimously. And one of the things that I thought the resolution did really well was addressing the need to provide our teachers and our staff additional culturally responsive teaching and pedagogy trainings. Now, something I would love to see incorporated into that would be follow-up on that. Because having been a classroom teacher, I can't tell you how many times I'd be pulled into a training, here are the best practices that we need to be doing, and then that was kind of it. So we need to make sure we're supporting our teachers and our staff and, and, you know, administration as well through this entire process, you know. Being equitable is not a one-time deal. It's something you need to do all the time. And I would also love, as I mentioned earlier, to see a home visit program because as all my colleagues or all my fellow candidates have actually said here, we need to include our community. And that's, I think, a great way to include our community is by doing something where we are out and encouraging our teachers and staff to meet with our families beyond school walls.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Bedford. So thank you so much for your responses to the first question. We are now going to move on to the second predetermined question, which is, how do you intend for the district to educate students on the full breadth of American history, including the experiences and contributions of Black, Indigenous, and people of color? Now, the order of response for this question will be Dr. Giffkin, followed by Dr. Bedford, then Mr. Smith and Ms. Dean. So, Dr. Giffkin, if you would respond to that question first, please.
Absolutely. You know, in terms of American history, my undergraduate is in American history. And, and it's an exciting topic. It's a very exciting topic. And I think there are a variety of ways that we can look and we can find secondary source material, meaning those are some of the voices that really may not have made it through history and been brought to the fore. So there are a variety of different academic sources that we could, that we could bring to the table to help students understand, here are the difference, different, different voices of history that came along throughout, all the wonderful things that helped make America great and continue to move it forward, right? In the way that we are. So I think there's, there's one approach to it. The second thing is, I'm a big believer in being a collector of stories. In fact, that's what my dissertation is, is what motivates someone to actually champion another person. And collecting their story is powerful. And so from my standpoint, could, from my standpoint, it's incredibly valuable to make sure that we are actually in real time talking with people who are not like our own. And whether that is something along the lines of two different school districts becoming partners from different economic, social, or, and different economic backgrounds and, and different social structures and different types of communities, that could be an incredibly powerful thing where we're sharing the stories real time with students who are going through a variety of different things.
Thank you, Dr. Giffkin. Now, Dr. Bedford, same question.
Oh, man, this is right up my alley. I love, I love this. And, you know, as you can see behind me, when it comes to educating on history and the stories of different folks and different humans, I think children's literature is so powerful. And I think that's a pretty easy thing that all teachers can be doing is bringing in those stories, just like Dr. Giffkin said, is sharing those stories, sharing stories from, like, from the people from those cultures and making sure we're also providing opportunities for counter narratives. So we're not just hearing the stories from the dominant culture, that we are hearing stories from everybody. And there is so much research and professionals in the field of education. Again, this is my background. So, so much work is going into this of how we can help educate and acknowledge the, the history along with some of the ugly parts of our history, because that is also a thing. So I think we need to make sure that we are giving space for all stories to be shared. And I love the idea of, you know, just inviting those voices in. Because there are just so many diverse stories and voices in Spokane alone. So we should be utilizing and accessing that through children's literature, through inviting families in, but just making those connections and, and building up our communities and learning the history.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bedford. Let's see, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think that the school district has a long way to go when it comes to this. As recently as five years ago, I took a US history class at North Central High School that failed to mention a lot of problematic things from our history that I had to learn when I got to the university of Washington in Seattle. A lot of eye-opening things about different perspectives of people and the histories of their cultures that I was completely sheltered from through our school system. So I think it's important that we're teaching it through the lens of the people that experienced different things in our history. How was their culture impacted? How, you know, how were other cultures impacting their culture? And looking at it through their lens, instead of the lens that it's always been taught through, which is that of, you know, those who have the power in today's world, that is white men like myself. And I recognize that privilege that I have and look forward to pushing, you know, those other perspectives through our history curriculum within our schools.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Ms. Dean?
Right. I switched my phone and my cellular network, so hopefully this is better. Yes, gosh, it is so important that we are teaching an accurate history to our children, warts and all. And you know, as I met with the Director of Public Education of our district, I am just dissatisfied with what is being taught to our children. Over and over again, it is the same narrative year after year without more. We need more. There needs to be more in part of our curriculum. However, as I'm knocking doors and meeting people, I am seeing that they're not, they're worried about tenants of critical race theory being taught to our children. And as the school district and the school board claims that there is nothing about critical race theory being taught, I personally have experienced it with my children and with my daughter in her class. So I just hope that our school district can be transparent about what critical race theory is or what is being taught, so we can build up that trust with our community and the parents.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dean. Now, for the third question, which will be up on the screen shortly, you're going to see that it's a very long question, but a very important question. So I hope you will absorb all the parameters that are mentioned in this question. And in the order of response will be Ms. Dean, Mr. Smith, Dr. Giffkin, and Dr. Bedford. So the question is, there is a growing number of LGBTQ plus students who are also Black, Indigenous, and people of color who not only face discrimination for their race, but also their gender, gender and sexual identity. Washington school districts are mandated to have a policy that, at minimum, complies with legislation prohibiting harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And school boards can adopt individualized district standards beyond state or federal legislation. How will you be proactive in protecting Black, Indigenous, people of color, and LGBTQ plus students in order to act to alleviate the mental and physical harm that these students may face? And again, the order will be Ms. Dean, Mr. Smith, Dr. Giffkin, and Dr. Bedford. So Ms. Dean, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Yeah, as you hear of this, it just gives reason for your heart to have concern. You know, I'm worried about our children in our school district that may feel these microaggressions to them. We have campus safety specialists that I have met with. And, you know, their goal, which I admire greatly, is to get to know the children individually. As we get to know the children individually, we can, we can actually look and see what is going on in their life and how we can support them better, even as teachers, even as leaders, administrators. As we're getting to know these children individually, we can help them. And especially those that are acting out, that aren't doing what they should, right? That are stepping across, that are, that are creating problems and discriminating against the children in our, in our community, in our school district. The same thing applies. We have to work to support these students, get to know them individually, and to root out the problems and look to see what the causes are. Why are they acting out? And teach them and educate them. Thank you. Now that it's on my phone, I can't, I don't have the, the paper and stuff. So I just have view of the moderator is all. So I'll try to, I'll try to switch this. Thanks for bearing with me, you guys.
Thank you. All right. Now, Mr. Smith, same question.
Yeah, I think that it's important we're talking about these issues on a day-to-day basis in our classrooms. Again, as someone who graduated from Spokane Public Schools, this was not something that was talked about in our classrooms. I was not talked about, taught the different journeys that people go on to find the way that they identify or things that they go through in that journey. Those were stuff I had to learn after I graduated from high school. And by then, the damage is done in our community. We're supposed to be educating our kids on, on people's journeys, how they get to where they're going. And it's all right. So many people have so many different journeys and we just need to be accepting of them and teach people on what some people might be going through. And again, we need to invest in mental health resources, wraparound services, because there is so much data that shows we can save so many lives if we know that one adult acknowledges and reaches out to these students who identifies LGBTQ plus and are going through bullying or other times of trauma in the school. If we have adults that know what they're going through and are able to acknowledge them and reach out to them, we will have much lower rates of suicide in those communities as well, which is another thing we should be talking about.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Dr. Giffkin?
All right. Well, this one is, this one's powerful for me. And you start by saying bullying of, of anyone is abhorrent to me. I lived for no longer than two years in just about any location growing up until I, until I finished my undergraduate degree. My mother was, my mother and father got divorced when I was in second grade and she worked nights at an ER all the way through high school for me. What that did by moving and, and joining so many different communities for me was immediately put me on the outside. So I've been called a lot of things. I have, I've experienced, you know, enough to, to make this a passion issue for me. In high school, I was part, I was fanatic into, into drama and, and, and got to see firsthand the pain that, that can be caused by bullying. So for me, I would look and I would say, we've got to share stories with people. We've got to get to know students on an individual basis. We need mentors. We need, we need people who, who can lead. And then we need to have community involvement. And I would love to unpack that more. But like so many of these questions, sixty seconds is just not enough to hit these issues.
Thank you, Dr. Giffkin. Dr. Bedford?
Thank you. I agree with Dr. Giffkin. Sixty seconds is not enough for these questions. I echo so many of the- I echo so many of the points that my fellow candidates made, such as what Mr. Smith said about making sure we're investing in mental health. I also think we need to make sure we are providing trainings and helping prepare our teacher staff and admin, and administration on supporting BIPOC and LGBTQ plus youth. That means recognizing our implicit biases. We all have them. I teach about this, and you know, if you bring up peanut butter, you're probably going to think of jelly. So we need to recognize the implicit biases that we have in ourselves in order to help make that change. I also think there are so many organizations locally that we can be partnering with and working with closely as, you know, as the school board, such as Odyssey over in Perry and Spectrum, to make sure we're supporting our LGBTQ plus youth and really providing them those safe spaces where they feel welcome and included.
And thank you very much, Dr. Bedford. So we have a final predetermined question. We may have questions following from the audience, but for now, the fourth question is, what should the district be doing to support the social, social, emotional, and mental health needs of students as we emerge from the pandemic? And the order of response will be Dr. Bedford, Dr. Gefkin, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Dean. So, Dr. Bedford?
This is a very important question, and you know, I admit, mental health support is not my personal expertise. So this is where I think that as, you know, school board director and as the school board as a whole, we need to be working with professionals in those arenas to find strategies and learn how to best support. But I also do believe it involves investing in mental health support. So whether that's supporting new levies or finding other funding sources, because our students have been through a lot, not just at the P-12 level, even in higher ed, so have our educators. So incorporating social emotional learning or SEL into the classroom, having just time during the day where our students can share what they're feeling. It's not just about academics all the time. We need to provide those spaces for students to talk about how they are feeling, because it's been a tough year. And so again, I think it's important to recognize creating those spaces and making sure we are finding funding to invest more in mental health supports.
Thank you. Dr. Gefkin?
Absolutely. Well, first and foremost, our biggest priority is to keep students in school, five days a week, in-person learning. There's no question that that has got to be the priority. Anything else that, that, that hinders that is, is not the hill to die on in my stand. So we need to keep students in school. Um, one of the things that has been coming to the forefront for me when I'm addressing and are talking to a variety of different teachers across the district is they haven't, they've inherited a classroom of a variety of different levels. It used to be that they would say, okay, we know approximately where these students are. Because of the pandemic and because of individualized learning and, and some of the, the ways that that did not work. And the teachers are now trying to say, how do I identify what those gaps are? We need to have professionals in place to help them identify it. We need some support from that as well. And this to me is where you go to community involvement. I don't know that we need to expand the, the, the school budget on this one. I think there are a variety of different outsourced materials. I think this is a great way where we get the Spokane community to be involved as mentors, as experts to come in and provide those opportunities as well. So those are a couple of small thoughts on that one.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things here. First and foremost, we need to be teaching age appropriate lessons on how students from a young age can deal with emotions that they're experiencing. I actually personally went through an SEO class from a teacher who teaches it to third graders. He's a counselor who goes around from classroom to classroom and teaches these lessons once a week. The things that they were talking about are how to deal with stress, anxiety, depression, all things that all of our students are experiencing on a day to day basis in the classroom. And I think that the sooner we can teach our students how to deal with those feelings, the better. And they're going to be able to excel more as an academic as well, if those are all addressed. And second, it's bringing in community organizations to help bolster our mental health staff that we currently have. You know, there's no lack of funding right now being directed to mental health in terms of in building. There's only so many bodies that you can have in a building serving so many students. We need to bring in more professionals from the community and organizations that can specialize and give treatments to age appropriate lessons.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Now, Ms. Dean, as I understand it, you do not have visual line on Nicole because if you're using your cell phone. So if it's okay with you, I, when I see Nicole raise her red sheet, I will just say 30 seconds. And when I see Nicole raise her whistle, I will say, your time is up.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, good. I am very passionate about mental health. After working with drug and alcohol addicted teens and victims of sex abuse, you know, it's just right. I wear it right on my heart for these kids. And then experiencing with my children, my five children and their, their friends and parents and even, even my friends, talking to them about their children and what they're going through. You know, I really think we have a very unique program in our school district. There's actually nothing like it in the nation, and people are very, very in tune to what we are doing. It doesn't even cost. Thank you. It doesn't even cost us money to implement more therapists. Do you know what it takes? Just room for a therapist in a school. So this is actually just up to the principal. If they can facilitate a space, we can actually get a therapist in. And these needs are met through families' insurances, through the Apple program, through Medicaid. There are programs that will pay for this. I love the concept of community outreach. I think that that helps. We can get people in there, teach lessons and classes and assemblies.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are the four predetermined questions that we had, but I do have now a follow-up question. And let's see, the follow-up question is this. What should the district do regarding social, excuse me, let me start over. What should the district do regarding social, emotional, mental health issues for teachers and staff? I'll repeat that. What should the district do regarding social, emotional, mental health issues for teachers and staff? And the order of response will be Dr. Gefkin, followed by Dr. Bedford, Ms. Dean, and then Mr. Smith. Dr. Gefkin?
All right. Well, thank you very much. Great question. I'm actually look to my firm and what we do for all of our professionals across the United States. And you know, our human capital department has done an amazing job of connecting us in a variety of different ways. They have taught webinars on emotional health. They have given us really tactical, tactical ways to, 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 you know, maintain community, maintain a variety of different things. And so, man, they've got that down. I think that's something that is fully within the wheelhouse of, of the human capital group downtown, to be able to, to provide those opportunities as well and, and give them really good parents or students, students, teachers. We're going to talk about teachers now. Give teachers those tools to be able to move forward. So it's, it's there, it's present. We just need to go ahead and lift it and make it accessible for our district.
Thank you. Dr. Bedford?
I think one of the biggest things is administration and people within the community need to do more than just acknowledge what teachers have been doing. You know, being in the classroom, you know, you hear all the sayings of teaching is a work of heart. Teachers don't get in it for the money, and that is so true. And sometimes, you know, we'll hear, well, we hear you make sure you're practicing self-care, you know, do all this. But then we aren't given resources or we aren't really fully supported or feel so fully supported. So I think we need to make sure that those who are offering the support actually follow through and follow up on that. Because teacher burnout is real. That is why so often the statistic is new teachers will leave the profession in three years. So we need to make sure that we are supporting teachers as much as possible in every aspect of what they do in their day. And as far as SEL, making sure they know the resources there and that we're following up with them to make sure that they have the supports they need.
Thank you, Dr. Bedford. Ms. Dean? And again, I will give you the 30 second and the one minute.
Okay, I appreciate it. Yes, so you know, there's fear, there's concern, there's worry. I even think of other mental health issues that dive us down into divergent paths of addiction and problem. Well, do you wonder what the opposite of those things are? It is connection. So actually, having our teachers in school, supporting them to teach full-time, five days a week, will actually give them those connections they need. But also, like Dr. Bedford and Dr. Gefkin said, like providing resources and opportunities for them to actually connect and to actually find resources where they can get this help and services they need. Even in my experience knocking doors, I did run into, I've ran into several teachers, and this too has been on their concern, even a parent of a teacher. And they are very concerned about what are we going to do to support our teachers? Well, we need to keep our kids in school full-time and let them do the job that they know how to do best. That will give them the self-confidence, reassurance, and the connections that they need.
And thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so first and foremost, the teachers are on the forefront of progress in our entire community. Everything that comes about in our community really comes from our schools and that community within our community. So it's important that we're giving them the resources they need, and it's important that we don't just talk about it, but that we're actually about it, like Dr. Bedford said. And you know, what that looks like is not asking teachers to go out of their way to find the mental health help that they might need. It's actually embedding that into their day to day work. We can build in clinics or, you know, work groups on days where it's just teachers in the building and students have the day off. We can do this in prep periods. We can bring professionals into the school on a day to day basis for not just our students, but our teachers only. And I don't think that's something that we talk about enough, because the teachers are really at the forefront of everything that happens, not just in our schools, but our entire community as a whole.
Thank you very much. Now, as we stated previously, we will, we will be taking questions from the audience. And we have a numerous amount of questions that have come in from the audience, but we won't be able to get to all of them before our promise and time of noon. So the first question from the audience, let me pull it up here. What role does the school board play in ensuring that students of color, students in poverty, and students with disabilities are served by the education system? Okay, so what role does the school board play in ensuring that students of color, students in poverty, and students with disabilities are served by the education system? The order of response will be Mr. Smith, Ms. Dean, Dr. Gefkin, and Dr. Bedford. So, Mr. Smith, you have the floor?
Thank you. Yeah, I think first and foremost, it's breaking down the barrier between the downtown office and our school buildings. We need directors to be in touch with what's happening on a day to day basis within our classrooms. You know, we can talk to our students, we can talk to our teachers. Instead of just checking in on them and doing your, you know, every so often check where the teacher is going to put on their best performance because they're being evaluated, and they're going to teach the lessons exactly the way that they should. We need to really be in touch with what's happening in the classroom. And we need to be focused on what's happening to our students of color in poverty and with disabilities. We need to have a hyper focus on those students, see what kind of results we are seeing. Are we making progress? Are we not? We need to have measurables to actually address that and then have the ability to move forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, now we will hear from Ms. Dean, and again, I'll give you your warnings.
Thank you. Yes, um, the role of the school board definitely to help these children would be to stay in school full-time, five days a week. That offers, that offers support for parents that they're able to work. That offers support for children to eat. You know, all these children in poverty that are hungry or worried or concerned, we are able to provide those services at the school to support these families in various ways. I think it's important that we do know what's going on inside and out of the classroom. This takes an individualized effort for us to get to know these children, even their families, even stepping outside into the community and looking what's going on at the parks and meeting people where they are, so we know what is going on.
Thank you very much. Dr. Gefkin?
Yeah, I would echo what Kate is saying. Um, we need to continue to stay involved in the community. We need to be out in the community. I know this community. I've lived in here for almost 20 years. I've been involved in a variety of different nonprofits and for-profits. I've been involved with a lot of different sporting opportunities. So I know this community, but I did not know this community in the same way that I've learned this community over the last couple of months knocking on doors and visiting people over, well over a thousand doors and listening to their stories and listening to what's going on all across Spokane, sitting with, you know, a Will Davis who is a mentor to, to gang bangers and saying, what is the, what is the stuff you need? You know, how do you communicate that? That to me is going to be the heart of it. School board is not, school board doesn't implement the policy, but we're certainly going to hold people accountable to say that we do that. But we need to be in touch. We need to be that vital conduit between the school district, the teachers, the school board, and our constituency. So I'll go.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gefkin. And Dr. Bedford?
I really like how Mr. Smith said that we just need to break that barrier between downtown and our schools and our communities, that the school board is not this idyllic group of people that sit in a building downtown, that we are part of this community too. And just as Ms. Dean and Dr. Gefkin said, of connecting with our community. I believe it's so important that the school board in their role as leaders in this community are active listeners to those in our community, to teachers, to students, to families. I also think that it goes beyond just knocking doors and voters. I think it's just as important that we talk and connect with refugee families, immigrants, formerly incarcerated. There's people who aren't able to vote, and when you're campaigning, that's who you want to reach. But they have students in our schools too. And for me, it is just as important to connect with them as it is to connect with voters who will hopefully help me get elected to the school board.
Thank you very much. And the second audience question for you, for candidates, is how do you define critical race theory? How do you define critical race theory? And the order of response will be, uh, Dr. Gefkin, Mr. Smith, Dr. Bedford, and Ms. Dean. Dr. Gefkin?
All right, well, me personally, it is a sociological overlay that informs people. It provides people a lens through which to see the world. That's what it's meant to do. I think unfortunately, as, as I've seen it continue to define and be implemented, it's oppositional in nature, and I think that's a problem. What it does is it sets up a binary system where you've got an oppressor and an oppressed. And those two things are immediately at odds. There's, there's arguments to say it's counted. It's, you know, it's fighting racism with racism. That to me is not something that we need to see in the schools. It's not a, I think I've mentioned this before, this is not, it doesn't set up a conduct or a context for listening. It doesn't set up a context for, for togetherness, for an opportunity to learn. So, you know, I could go on and on and on that my dissertation was grounded in critical theory, not critical race theory. And, and, and there are some merits to bringing up, again, what I said before, secondary source materials, the voices that were lost. We need to hear those. We can't do that in an oppositional way.
Thank you very much.
Too much devices.
Thank you, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, um, so let's be clear about what critical race theory is. Critical race theory is a graduate level course taught in law school that has no place in our schools and is not in our schools. Now, what should be important and what we should be talking about are what are we teaching in our K through 12 schools? I for one believe we should be teaching a anti-racist education to all of our students through all perspectives, as I've talked about earlier. From all aspects, the good, the bad, and the ugly, because how are we going to grow if we don't talk about these things? The word critical race theory has become a boogeyman used by the far right, to be quite frank with you, to scare people away from talking about race or issues that matter in our community. What matters in our community is making sure that we grow and move forward, because quite frankly, there's a lot of work left to be done when it comes to racial justice in this community, and the place to start is learning. And where does learning start? In our schools. And then we can start to make generational impact for years to come, and that's what I think we should be talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Dr. Bedford?
So I will start with an academic definition that critical race theory is a theoretical framework that is founded in law studies. It is not a curriculum, and that's something that is being said so far and wide across our country, that, that critical race theory is a curriculum. It is not. It is a tool to look at the system that we have in place. And so when we think of And so when we think of addressing this in schools, I agree with Mr. Smith. We have to talk about the good, the bad and the ugly of our history in our country. You know, critical race theory has tenants such as the permanence of racism, recognizing that racism does exist in our society. I wish that weren't true. I wish that weren't a thing that we had to acknowledge. But if we want to make sure that we are supporting diversity, equity and inclusion in our schools, in our communities, in our workplaces, throughout everywhere. We need to recognize the history and CRT is a tool for that. But it is not fighting racism with racism. It is not a curriculum. It is a framework at a graduate level studied in law.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dean.
Yeah, this is a great topic um, for clarity, right? Doesn't everybody want it? I hear this a lot on the campaign trail. I get emails about this all the time. What is critical race theory? You know, I even met with the Director of Public Education and she said, I don't even know what critical race theory is. So if she doesn't know and our district doesn't know, then that just leaves our people. Up in arms with concern because they want to know what is being taught to their children. They want to make sure that our children are being taught correctly. I firmly believe that our children need to be taught an accurate history, warts and all, the good, the bad, the ugly, slavery, racism. You know bigotry, all this stuff needs to be forefront and we need to be forthcoming, but so does our school district. You say it's not in our schools. But you know what? It's in our libraries, in our schools. That's something that we need to consider. So is it in our schools or not? Are there tenants of critical race theory actually in our equity policy?
Sorry, but your time is up. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for all, uh, for addressing that audience question. Now, a third question from the audience is. What issues in the Spokane Public Schools District keep you up at night? How will you address them if you were elected? Again, what issues in the Spokane Schools, Public Schools District keep you up at night? And how will you address them if you are elected? The order will be Mr. Smith, Ms. Dean, Dr. Gefkin and Dr. Bedford. So we'll start off, uh, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, that's a great question. And for me, the issue that keeps me up at night is. What are our students prepared to do after they leave Spokane Public Schools? Um, I saw too many of my fellow students and colleagues that got left behind in the schools. And now they're being left behind every day in the broader community. We need to provide more opportunities for all of our students to succeed and have a pathway to success after graduation. Graduation is called commencement because it's the beginning of the rest of your life, right? So we need to, our students to be prepared for the rest of their life. We need to provide opportunities for trades, apprenticeships. And other ways for students to succeed that might not excel in a traditional classroom setting. And we need to invest in mental health resources to make sure that students can address their own emotional. Um, challenges that they're experiencing and move forward to become stronger in our community and contribute to our community. Um, as well as contributing to their own home in their lives for generations to come. So I think that we need to be talking about what are our students prepared to do besides college after Spokane schools.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Dean.
Yes, thank you. You know, I, I feel um, like I see up at night concern about the children that are lost. We have lower enrollment rates. You know, I, just the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, that is what concerns me most, right? Our children are behind. They were already behind even before the pandemic. So what are we doing to get these kids back up to speed? What programs, what implementation, what supports are we giving to teachers? What testing capabilities? How can we know where our kids are at? That is my, my biggest concern, you know, where are our children at? You know, we've, we've got to find these kids. There are kids that aren't coming, that aren't enrolled, that where, where are they? We need to go out into the community and find them. We need to do deeper outreach, make sure that they are being taken care of. And bring them back to school full time so they can get the education that they deserve, that they need.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Gefkin.
I've had a lot of sleepless nights, actually. Um, three things come to mind. First one is foundational education and academics. You know, I've talked with a variety of, of small businesses that tell me that they will not hire Spokane School District students. Because they're not prepared to take on even just those, you know, those particular jobs that they're, that they're looking for. We're behind. We've been behind. Uh, I, I agree, the pandemic has exacerbated that. I also agree that there's got to be a variety of different paths for success that we have to tout, that we have to go ahead and say, look. There are so many different trades, there are military options, there are other professional paths that could be explored and all of those are successful. Right? That, we need to redefine our, our definition of success and put metrics in place and, uh, and money in place that actually supports that. And then the other thing is those left behind students. You know, I think we were very fortunate. There are a variety of different students who weathered the, um, weathered staying at home and, 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 and that. And from this point forward, they are continuing to, to, to get back into up to speed and, and a variety of that sort of thing. Um, it doesn't mean that they're where they need to go and we need to stay uh, consistent with them. But there is a whole lot of students, there are a whole lot of students that are, that are on a down spiral right now. We lost over forty-six thousand homeless students in, across Washington State over the course of the last year.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gefkin. And Dr. Bedford.
So for me, one of the items that keeps me up at night is, you know, echoing a lot of what was already said, but just. Addressing opportunity and access to education. I think we saw a lot of inequities during the pandemic when we're thinking about broadband access, multiple families being at the home. You know, not having an adult in the home to support because maybe, you know, they're working. So making sure we are addressing access to education. Along with the opportunities we are providing for our students. I think we need to start being more innovative and look at some non-traditional approaches. Because I've had the opportunity to tour the community school and it's amazing. It's a project-based learning school. And the students are doing hands-on, self-driven, student-centered learning. And we get, we need to have more options for that to really support all of our students as we move forward and reevaluate education in Spokane Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Bedford. We have time for one more question from the audience and I apologize to the audience members who have submitted questions, but we won't have a chance to get to them. Because this uh, will barely allow us time for closing statements and for my closing. So the fifth and final audience question will be. Please address how schools should deal with bullying. Would you agree that educational discipline should take place right away? And again, please address how schools should deal with bullying. Would you agree that educational discipline should take place right away? And we're going to start off here with, uh, Dr. Bedford.
Had to find my unmute because I was looking at the question in the chat. So I think this comes back to social emotional learning and integrating that into our school days. And making sure we are supporting our teachers and our staff and building communities in their classrooms and their schools. We know research shows that when we build relationships with our students, we as teachers and staff, that helps support them. In the larger scheme of things. And so I think so often we are quick to jump into punishment. Especially disproportionately of students of color. And so we need to, as well as students with identified learning disabilities. So I think we need to make sure that we are creating these communities in our classrooms to really support and wrap around our students, not just as teachers. Not just as staff and not just as students together. We really need to build these communities in our classrooms. And then go beyond the school walls, as I've been saying, doing like home visit programs where we are connecting with families. And finding out ways of how we can support our students when they're not in school.
Thank you, Dr. Bedford. Um, now, Ms. Dean.
Thank you, yes. Um, man, it's so tough to see the bullying going on. And you know, it's just right apparent, it can be right in our faces and in our children's faces and they emulate and they, they, they want to learn more and they. They grab onto things and hold on and it can create even a bigger problem. So immediate action, I just don't think we have to have one thing that we do in place for these kids because they're. This usually is a symptom of a bigger problem, right? It's usually something more that is going on with the child or in the child's home. Or like Dr. Bedford said, behavioral problems can uh, actually stem from ADHD and all kinds of other problems. It can stem from stress and just worry and consideration. So I think we would do well to get to know these children, have the children inside, have discussion. Talk about what's going on in their home, meet them and have individualized care for these kids. Because just like my five children, I can't discipline them the same. It is actually very different for each one. And that is what we have to do for our children. We have to take this individually.
Thank you. Dr. Gefkin.
Thank you very much. You know, this, this makes me think of a, a variety of different things. Um, you know, the first one is again, my mom being an ER nurse for, for decades. The idea of triage comes to mind and that's exactly what we need to do. We need to be able to make sure that we have, um, that we have triaged people, allow people to triage a situation. Because it's not simply the person who is potentially being the bully or the person who is being, uh, who is being targeted there. There, we've got to look at what is all classroom safety, what, what's going on there? I've talked with Big Ed and he has shown me pictures of absolutely wrecked classrooms. Because students went off, right? That, so that safety issue is there. We've got to have our teachers and our secure, our, uh, our safety people trained in the, in those areas. It's absolutely critically important. Um. And. Drawing a blank, sorry. So safety is absolutely critical. Teaching our, our, our security people or, excuse me, our safety people and, uh, and our teachers how to do that. Um, and, and maintaining uh, the ability to actually understand it is, is of utmost importance.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thanks. I think, um, we should really be looking at using more restorative practices. And um, as Dr. Bedford touched on, making sure that the SEO help is in the classroom, starting from a young age. And giving age-appropriate curriculum. Um, you know, discipline disproportionately impacts students of colors, color and students with disabilities. Um, which then increases the school, the prison pipeline, another big structural issue that we should be talking about. Um, I think it's important that, um, we make sure that all of our students feel safe. And the way that we feel safe is by talking about these things, not um, punishment for them. Or other means of discipline. I think it's important that we allow students to talk about this, maybe create a mediation between teacher and the two students in the situation. So that the bully can understand maybe what the person who's getting bullied is going through or what their background is or where they come from. And once we can develop more of an understanding in a community within our schools, people will start to feel safe and students will be able to, um, you know. Avoid these situations going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, well, that concludes our questions. We, uh, have had the predetermined, predetermined questions. We have had the, uh, questions from the audience and now it is time for, for your closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement. In the order of presentation will be Mr. Smith, followed by Ms. Dean, followed by Dr. Gefkin. And followed by Dr. Bedford. So Mr. Smith, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry, and thank you to all the organizations involved in putting this forum together. It's been awesome to have the chance to talk about issues important specifically to these communities. Um, and how we can address those. I think for me, the reason that I'm running for school board is to bring someone's voice who experienced thirteen years in the classroom. Um, someone who can relate to what students are going through on a day-to-day basis. And break down the barrier between authority and student or authority and teacher. Um, I believe that it's important we create avenues for all of our students to succeed. Whether that be through apprenticeships, trade schools. Um, you know, project-based learning is a great way to, for students to move forward who don't succeed in a traditional classroom setting. Um, I also believe that we should be investing in mental health resources, uh, addressing the forty percent of our youth that say they're experiencing depression. And teaching age-appropriate curriculum at an early age. Um, look, these are all things that are going to help propel us forward as a school district. And bring more students along with those who have already found success in Spokane Public Schools. And I believe that, um, our mission going forward in the next decade is to prepare our students. To be able to compete for jobs in this economy. And that starts at every level. Um, my name is Riley Smith. I'm running for Spokane Public Schools Board of Directors, position four. I would appreciate your vote come November second and uh, whatever you do, just make sure you vote, exercise your right to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, Ms. Dean, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Yeah, Larry, thank you for your professionalism, hosting a great, a great meeting for all of us candidates. And to the Coalition of Color, this has been wonderful. BIPOC community, we appreciate your, um, involvement. This is, this has been a good opportunity for us to, to share ourselves and our thoughts. I'm Katedine, running for school board. You know, as a mother of five children, I just want to be an advocate. For your children and mine. You know, for me, this is personal, right? But for you too, this is actually personal, right? Getting to decide and exercising your right to vote, this is about our children, even your children. You need my voice and I need your votes. So let's come. I'm Katedine, I'm running for position four. And I would love to have your votes. Let's get in, do, do the work that's necessary to make this school district wonderful. To make it a place where every student can thrive, where everybody has the opportunities that they need. And to make sure that our school district is providing the perfect scaffolding. For the minds of our children, that they will be transparent in what they are showing and teaching. Vote for Katedine come November second. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Okay, uh, Dr. Gefkin.
Thank you very much, Larry. And again, I echo the, the, the thanks and the gratitude for hosting and, and doing so well as a moderator, Coalition of Color and BIPOC, BIPOC community. Thank you as well for including me in this conversation. I really appreciate that and look forward to working with you on an ongoing, uh, ongoing basis. Um, I know this community. I, I have been here. I have been involved in a variety of different ways. Um, I am passionate about transparency of communication, honest and open communication between the board and the school district and its constituency. Whether that be, uh, whether that be students, family members, teachers, taxpayers. Uh, and I'm concerned about upholding that and, and bringing that, uh, bringing that back. I'm concerned and passionate about opportunity for all students to become the best version of themselves. And there's a variety of different ways that we need to engage that. And I'm also concerned about advocacy, advocating for students who are disenfranchised. Advocating for community members who feel disenfranchised and that their voice does not count, that they're belittled. Um, advocating for teachers who feel their voices are not heard, uh, not heard. So for the last two decades, I have worked in partnership with educators. I've been an educator. I've been in partnership with mentors, community mentors across all boards. Um, and I will continue to, to work with that. I work in a professional situation that brings fiscal responsibility to its own practice. And that is something that we desperately need, uh, to maintain as well as we move forward. And I remembered one of my points from, from the previous question. Did you know that this, this month's TikTok challenge is slap a teacher? Meaning anyone who watches that is encouraged to slap a teacher. So we need to equip our teachers. We need to make sure that they're in a safe spot. We need to make sure that they are equipped with a proper way of, of, of maintaining safety in the room. So I'm passionate about all these issues. I'm passionate about a variety of different things. And more importantly, I bring a variety of different perspectives. There is no one singular perspective that is able to, uh, that is able to engage the, the entirety of this work. It needs to be so much more. Thank you. I appreciate your vote, Daryl Gefkin, position three, school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gefkin. Uh, Dr. Bedford.
All right, well, just like my fellow candidates, thank you, Larry, Nicole, Francis, Spokane NAACP, Rowena, Karen. Coalition of Color, APEX Spokane, all the groups that are a part of this, you know, thank you for hosting this forum. And providing this opportunity for us to speak with our community and for voters and non-voters to hear what we want to bring to the table. Of what we want to bring to the Spokane Public School Board. And as I said before, I'm running for school board to bring that educator's voice to the table. You know, when we're talking about teachers, I'm sitting here and just reminiscing of my time in the classroom, in the P-12 classroom, teaching my fifth graders. And now I am a teacher of teachers and I'm helping prepare the future teachers that are going to be entering Spokane Public School. My heart is the heart of an educator and I want to bring that passion and experience to the school board to help us move forward. Um, especially after over a year and a half, almost two years. That's the weirdest thing for me to say is almost two years of learning in a pandemic. Cause I think there's a lot to be taken away from that. We learned that online learning is for some students. They thrive, but it's not for all students. We learned that online learning is for some students. They thrive, but it's not for all students. We learned we needed, we need to identify how we are approaching access to education to make sure that is equitable for all of our students and families. We also really learned that we need to take actual action on ensuring and promoting diversity, equity and inclusion in our schools and in our classrooms and in our communities as well. So now's that time to reflect on how we can change education so that it is more equitable and accessible to all of our students and teachers and families. So please feel free to visit my website, www.lectbedford.com. And, you know, you can donate, sign up to volunteer, snag a yard sign. But I just, I hope to earn your vote in November. If not sooner, ballots drop on October 13th. And just remember, I am, I have a book for every occasion. And today I'm going to say that all are welcome in our district and vote Bedford for school board.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bedford, and thank you to all the candidates for your closing statements. Now, a reminder that the the votes or the ballots are going to be mailed on October 13th, somewhere between there and October 15th. And that we encourage all of you to register and to vote. So keep your eye on your mailboxes for your for your paper ballot. And if you haven't registered to vote, registered to vote yet, that's okay. In Washington State, you're eligible and able to register online or by mail by October 25th. But you can register in person up until 8:00 PM on Election Day, which will be Tuesday, November 2nd. And there will start right there. There's a QR code on the screen. If you want to use your phone to take a picture of that QR code, that's going to give you a a location for the various ballot drop boxes. So, so on behalf of the Spokane Coalition of Coalition of Color, I want to thank the candidates who joined us this morning as well as the many volunteers who made this all possible. The Spokane Coalition of Color has our last virtual candidate forum on October 9th from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM or 12:00 noon. Now that's next Saturday. We will be hosting the candidates for the Spokane Valley City Council. And we really hope you can tune in with us. And thank you to all of the audience members for taking the time to engage in the democratic process and by making an effort to be more informed citizens and for submitting questions. Now, in addition to the to our Zoom today, you know, this was live streamed on YouTube. And I believe we have just a whole bunch of people that that are following our live stream. But thank you to everyone that is following there. So this concludes our candidate forum. Thank you all for joining us and please don't forget to vote. Goodbye.